We are ready.
Allison, are you?
I am, I am ready. I was trying to beat you to it. I am ready, Mr. Chairman. You guys can go right ahead.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
So with that, I'm going to call to order this regularly scheduled meeting of the City of Orange Township Planning Board for today. Wednesday, April twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five via the Zoom platform at seven thirty-two P M. I'm going to first ask that everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Salute, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you all.
Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Member Mobley.
I have my video unchecked, but, and I can see the blue light on my, uh, computer, but I do not see my picture showing. I don't know why. I'll go out and come back in and see if that fixes it.
Okay.
All right. Have to pause until we have a quorum. Is that right, Madam Secretary?
Yes, uh, I, I need him for the quorum, please. Um, well, Attorney Wenzel, can we, but, do the sunshine law? In the meantime?
Uh, we should read.
Okay.
I'm just trying to count. I, I wish the Zoom would make like columns instead of like the Hollywood squares. You know, because I'm trying to count board members. So we have Chair, Vice Chair, Councilman Eason, uh, Mr. Foston, the mayor.
And that would be five.
And that would be.
Right.
Okay, one, two.
Yeah.
Three, four.
Got it.
Alright, so we need, we, we, we need, um.
No, that's fine.
That's five.
Oh, that is five. Sorry. Yes. It's because, uh, we're.
Yeah, number Foston doesn't have his cap rolling.
Yeah, just.
I'm here, I'm here.
Yeah, we see you, Councilwoman. All right, so.
Alright, there you go.
Madam Secretary, have we met the sunshine law?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, in accordance with Chapter two thirty-one, Section five of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this remote public meeting of the Planning Board of the City of Orange Township was filed with the Municipal Clerk of the City of Orange Township posted on the city's bulletin board designated for that purpose and on all official city website as well as mail to the city official newspaper as provided by ordinance.
Can you take attendance, please?
Yes. Member Foston. You're muted, Member Foston.
Present.
Member Anuké? He's absent. Member Mobley? He is looking like he's joining. Okay. I'm gonna continue. Uh, I'm gonna mark him absent for now. Member Latour stated he would be absent. Council Vice President Eason? Council Vice President Eason, you're muted.
Okay, apparently, um, it's not working.
Okay. That's, uh, Member Mobley. Mr. Chairman, if I may, can I start the, uh, attendance again, please?
Please.
Member Mobley?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
No, no, you're good. Continue.
Okay. Member Foston?
Present.
Member Anuké is absent. Member Mobley? Member Mobley, I can't hear you. I see that you're there, but I can't hear you.
I'm sorry. What was your question?
No.
We're doing attendance, Councilwoman.
I'm doing attendance right now.
I'm here.
Okay. I'm gonna have to mark, member Mobley absent. Member Latour is absent. Council Vice President is, Ethan is present. Mayor Warren.
Yes.
Present. Vice Chair Jones?
Here.
Chairman Holmes?
Cause this is the first one I got here and, um, y'all sound was sitting.
I'm, I'm sorry. Quorum has been met.
Thank you.
What a night.
I hope this is not, okay, anyway, keep moving. Is there any correspondence?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, um, Attorney, where did he go?
He's in the center square.
I'm here.
Brad, where is he?
I'm here.
Okay, all right, so four seventy-six, uh, Thomas Boulevard, the, uh, attorney is present. We received correspondence for a request for adjournment, uh, council.
Yeah, uh, good evening, uh, uh, the board members. Uh, I'm, my name's Greg Pasquale. I'm from the law firm of Jallow and Jallow, and I represent, um, the Cross Crown Christian, uh, Church. Uh, back in, uh, two thousand, uh, twenty-three, they had an application at four seventy-six Thomas Boulevard, uh, which was approved in, uh, in April of two thousand twenty-three. Uh, it's Resolution Number, uh, twenty-two oh five. Uh, we're looking for an extension of time in order to, um, can, uh, get our permits and the like because we've had some issues. Uh, we had a, one of the conditions was getting a consolidation deed that delayed us. Uh, we also had to get an agreement written with our neighbors for parking. Uh, and more importantly, though, the, the bank that the church has been dealing with, uh, recently went through a merger, and so they've had to go through their financing, uh, again. And so we're looking for a one-year extension on, on our, uh, application, on the approval. And I believe, um, uh, Executive Pastor John, uh, uh, Baker was, was supposed to be on. I don't know. I, I can't tell if he's here or not.
He's here.
Okay.
He's muted. I think he was having some technical, uh, challenges. My name is Stacy Porter. I'm the Executive Administrator for, for the church, so I'm
Okay.
and pastors here as well, but.
So. Go ahead. So if you have any questions for, uh, the pastor or, uh, for the administrator, um, you know, they're here and able to testify if you need them.
I don't know what just happened to him.
Um, Madam Secretary, is this the first extension?
This would be our first extension, yes.
Okay. And, and what was the date with that you said passed? I mean, um.
It was.
Attorney Pasquale.
Yeah. The, uh, the, the resolution is Resolution twenty-two oh five, which was passed in April of two thousand twenty-three. Uh, it actually wasn't signed until May of two thousand twenty-three. Um, but that's when it was actually, uh, the resolution was passed.
Okay. Um, Attorney Wenzel, is there anything that you wanna? As far as we proceed?
No, this is, um, you know, the usual, uh, I would say re-usual, but this is the manner in which an applicant under these circumstances would request an extension, uh, due to externalities that they've been, uh, they faced. Uh, I think you've identified, uh, Attorney Pasquale has identified what those externalities are. And in the circumstances, this is why the board is, uh, normally gives the extension. This is, uh, as indicated is a first extension, so this would be from one year from the date of the expiration. Uh, wouldn't be from this date. It would be the date of expiration to one year from that point. Uh, and, um, so it's a, it's only a one-year extension, but it sounds to me based upon Mr., uh, Pasquale's uh, representations that, uh, um, some of the items that were holding the back have been resolved and they're soon to be on their way. Uh, so that's, uh, that, that's before you at this point. It's, uh, not, uh, not an unusual request, uh, for these type of circumstances.
All right, do we need a, excuse me, do you need a roll call, vote?
Roll call, yeah, so roll call and vote to extend for one year the approvals for, uh, this is Cross and Crown. I vote is, Cross and Crown?
Yeah, Cross and Crown Christian Church.
Four seventy-six Thomas Boulevard.
That's correct.
So that's a motion to approve or you just go with the roll call?
Motion to approve the extension. Yes, we need a motion and a second and then a roll call.
Motion to approve.
Uh, thank you. Motion by Member Mobley is there, second?
Second.
Second.
Acknowledge him. Chairman, one second, I'm sorry.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Let's acknowledge his presence. I marked him absent prior.
Oh, well, let the record show that, uh, Member Mobley is present at seven forty-two.
Thank you.
And he did make the motion, which he was accounted for. I didn't get the second. Who's the second?
Foston.
Member Foston, thank you. Are there any questions on the motion? Madam Secretary?
Member Foston?
Yes.
Member Mobley?
Yes.
Council Vice President Eason?
Yes.
Mayor Warren?
Yes.
Chair, Vice Chair Jones?
Yes.
Chairman Holmes?
Yes.
Motion passes. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're quite welcome and thank you. Uh, with that, we'll move the agenda for the adoption of the February twenty-six, two thousand twenty-five meeting minutes.
No, Mr. Chairman, we have one more correspondence, if I may.
Oh, I apologize.
Yes. Um, the applicant Vita Capital LLC requested an extension to the June twenty-fifth meeting. That is for five fifty-four Nossa Street. And, uh, that letter is included in your packet. It was from Attorney, uh, Reggie, Reginald Jenkins, I'm sorry. And, um, I'll turn it over to Attorney Wenzel.
So a- as, uh, Mr. Reyes has indicated, this is a request to place it on, uh, the, um, the June date. And, um, so that, that's, that's when they would have to do. We've talked about notice, uh, on this as well.
The June, not May?
June. June twenty-fifth.
There's, there's, and, and, and Chairman, if I may, there's no action that the board needs to take because this matter is not, um, been opened for your, for your decision-making capacity at this point. So it's merely a, a date certain for the June date. It's just an advisement is the point.
So this board doesn't need to do anything at this time? Other than approving?
No, 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 because there's, there's, this is not, you're, you're not approving, uh, any, you're not approving extension or any other action. It's just their notice to you.
Okay.
So that the board is aware. That's when they're coming back.
Okay, thank you. Um, Madam Secretary, is there any other correspondence?
No, Mr. Chairman, no other correspondence at this time.
All right, thank you. So move to the adoption of the February twenty-six, two thousand twenty-five meeting minutes. And they were included in the, uh, the Dropbox for all to review.
Sorry, this is Sandra Feisler from two seventy Elwin. Um, are we gonna discuss my case as well? I'm sorry, just didn't wanna miss it.
Once we get to that order, yes.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
No problem. Patience. Thank you. So is there, um, a motion on the adoption of the February twenty-six meeting minutes?
Motion to adopt.
Motion by Council Vice President Eason? Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Member Mobley? Are there any questions on the motion? Madam Secretary?
Member Foston?
Yes.
Member Mobley?
Yes.
Council Vice President Eason? Council Vice President?
Yes.
Mayor Warren?
Yes.
Vice Chair Jones?
Yes.
Chairman Holmes?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Next, we have the adoption of the March twenty-six, two thousand twenty-five meeting minutes. Is there a motion?
Motion to adopt.
Motion from Councilwoman Eason? Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Vice Chair Jones? Are there any questions on the motion? Seeing none? Madam Secretary?
Member Foston?
Yes.
Member Mobley?
Yes.
Council Vice President Eason?
Yes.
Mayor Warren?
Yes.
Vice Chair Jones?
Yes.
Chairman Holmes?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Excuse me. Next item on the agenda is the extension to request for approval for case number twenty-two dash fourteen A E N Urban Renewal LLC. That's forty-eight South Day Street.
Mr. Chairman, uh, Attorney Asadarian is here on behalf of the applicant.
Yes, I'm here. Uh, good.
There we go.
Good evening, sir.
Gregory Asadorian from the Dakota's Law Firm. Um, we're looking for a, a one-year extension. This is our first request. We were before this board in, uh, two thousand twenty-three, and we secured preliminary and final site plan approval and also lot consolidation approval. Um, the resolution was memorialized on May twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three, which means, uh, it would expire on May twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five. We're looking for a one-year extension to May twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-six. Um, I sent a letter in dated April ninth of this year, which sets forth the basis. I'll just briefly touch upon, um, the basis for the request. Uh, my client, since getting the approval, um, has been designated the redeveloper. There's been a resolution adopted by the city to that effect. Uh, we also got, um, county planning board approval with respect to the lock consolidation. We filed the plat, so that's been recorded. We also, uh, entered into a escrow agreement with the city. Um, they were above-ground, uh, oil tanks which were removed. Uh, we also applied, uh, for a pilot, uh, that was been negotiated, I think, around uh, September, October, November of last year. Uh, we still are waiting to get a decision on the pilot. If the, uh, pilot is, uh, approved, we could then enter into a developer's agreement, or even if it's not approved, however it goes. But, uh, we need to, the final step is really just to get the decision on the pilot, so we could then, uh, enter into a developer's agreement and proceed. Uh, like I said, my client's been, uh, proceeding diligently, uh, on this matter. There's been just items out of its control, and we're looking for a one-year extension at this point.
All right. With that, uh, entertain the motion for an extension on this request.
Motion to.
Can you state the, state the request it is? State what case it is?
Um, A E N Urban Renewal. Case number twenty-two dash fourteen. Forty-eight South Day Street.
Okay.
Second.
So that was a motion from Vice Chair Jones? And a second by Councilwoman Eason? Any questions on the motion? Madam Secretary?
Member Foston?
Yes.
Member Mobley?
Yes.
Council Vice President Eason?
Yes.
Mayor Warren?
Yes.
Vice Chair Jones?
Yes.
Chairman Holmes?
Yes.
Motion passes. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you for showing, sir.
Thank you.
Next, we need to memorialize the extension request for approval for case number twenty-two dash zero seven, Orange Remax Properties LLC. That's eighty-five Main Street.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, all members present are able to vote.
With that, uh.
You need it?
I'm sorry.
You need a motion?
One second, one second. One moment.
This is, this is the extension.
I'm actually Council Vice President, what? What's going on? Council Vice President Eason was not present. She's not able to vote.
Attorney Wenzel?
No, I just, uh, was following along with what Ms. Reyes was saying, that's all.
All right. So with that, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair?
Yes. Vice President Eason.
On this, I think they need to tell us how long the wait, the extent, you can't vote on it till you know how long the extension they want.
Just, just to, just to clarify, and this is where I went wrong with Ms. Reyes for a second, uh, Councilwoman. Um, this is to memorialize the resolution wh- which you approved at the last meeting. So you approved the extension at the last meeting. We're just memorializing the resolution. So the next, the next few that you're gonna hear are memorializing those resolutions which you passed at the last meeting.
And, and correct me if I'm wrong, Council, I mean, Madam Secretary, Council President, Vice President was not present?
That's correct.
No, I'm not voting, but I just thought that on the record, you'd wanna know how long the extension was for.
And that is on the record from the previous meeting.
Okay.
And it was included in the minutes.
Okay.
All right. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion from Member Mobley. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Member Foston. Any questions on the motion? Madam Secretary?
Member Foston?
Yes.
Member Mobley?
Yes.
Mayor Warren?
Yes.
Vice Chair Jones?
Yes.
Chairman Holmes?
Yes.
Motion passes.
You still have to call my name so I can abstain.
Okay, I will do this again. My apologies. Member Foston?
Yes.
Member Mobley? Member Mobley, you are muted.
Yes.
Council Vice President Eason?
I'm studying.
Mayor Warren?
Yes.
Vice Chair Jones? Vice Chair Jones?
Yes.
Chairman Holmes?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Next, we will memorialize the extension request for approval for case number twenty-two dash fifteen, six seventeen Scotland Urban Renewal LLC, six seventeen Scotland Road. Who was present? Everyone except Councilwoman Eason?
No, in this resolution, Mr. Chairman, uh, Mayor Warren was absent, Council Vice President Eason was absent, and Member Mobley. Not able to vote.
Okay.
Um, Attorney Wenzel?
Yep.
I am, uh, I'm in a little bit of a situation here. I have three members that would be abstained. Will this, uh, be able to still carry based on the amount of members I have?
All you're doing is memorializing.
Okay.
Okay, so it's just the majority of the members available to vote.
Wonderful. Thank you, sir.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion from Vice Chair Jones. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Member Foston. Are there any questions on the motion? Uh, seeing none, Madam Secretary?
Member Anuké? Member Anuké?
Anuké is absent.
Yeah, it's absent.
I'm sorry, Member Foston.
Yes.
Member Mobley?
Abstain.
Council Vice President Eason?
Abstain.
Mayor Warren?
Abstain, abstain.
Vice Chair Jones?
Yes.
Chairman Holmes?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Next, we will memorialize the resolution for case number twenty-two dash zero two, Peak Reoc three, Owner Urban Renewal, seventy-two South Essex Avenue, amended site plan and final approval.
Mr. Chair is twenty-five.
Twenty-five oh two, Chairman.
Apologize. Twenty-five oh two. Okay. It'll be one of them nights.
Yeah.
So this is gonna memorialize resolution for case number twenty-five oh two, Peak Reoc three, Owner Urban Renewal, seventy-two South Essex Avenue, amended site plan and final approval.
Mr. Chairman, all members present are able to vote.
With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion from Member Foston? Is there?
Second.
Second from Member Mobley? Are there any questions on the motion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary?
Member Foston?
Yes.
Member Mobley?
Yes.
Council Vice President Eason?
Yes.
Mayor Warren?
Yes.
Vice Chair Jones?
Yes.
Chairman Holmes?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, moving the agenda, item number twelve, case number twenty-three dash zero five. That's four ninety-two Conover Terrace LLC. Four ninety-two Conover Terrace Preliminary and Final Site Plan Approval.
Mr. Chairman, um, where, Attorney LaMelo is here on behalf of the applicant.
Attorney LaMelo just, okay, there you go.
Uh, good evening. How are you?
Good evening.
I am, uh, here on behalf of the applicant, uh, four ninety-two Conover Terrace. Uh, and I will defer to Mr. Wenzel, but I, I believe that the, uh, vote is simply limited, or the matter is simply limited to a vote this evening. I don't think that the, uh, board uh, requires additional testimony, uh, or, or, or statements or introductions, uh, on the record, but I will defer to Mr. Wenzel on that.
So th- thank you, Attorney LaMelo. Through you, Chair. Um, this matter was presented before the board, uh, some time ago. Uh, it was a, uh, site plan application with no variances. Uh, the applicant, uh, presented the case, and at that time, the board denied the application. The applicant then, uh, expressed their rights to appeal the matter to Superior Court. And, uh, the matter was heard before the Superior Court. And I believe, Attorney LaMelo will correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it was Judge Gardner, uh, down in the Superior Court. Uh, Judge Gardner heard the matter and made the following determination. Uh, Judge Gardner found that the, uh, denial of the site plan, uh, was, um, arbitrary and capricious. It was improper, and he remanded the matter back to the board to approve the site plan application. This, this is the important piece here. Judge Gardner, Judge Gardner's decision and his order does not state that the matter should be reheard. The judge has the option, when he enters the decision, to state that more testimonies needed with regard to certain items, or that the resolution needs to be re-authored, or some other type of relief. Here, what Judge Gardner determined is that the, there was, uh, no reason why the, the site- there was uh no reason why the, the site plan should not be um submitted back to the board for approval. So basically, what Judge Gardner has determined is that the site plan should be approved. He can't, he can't do that. It has to come back to you to enter that vote. And then the matter, and then um that, that, that is the that is the order, as the fulfillment of Judge Gardner's order. If we don't do that, we would be in contravention to Judge Gardner's order. And I've uh had uh extensive conversations with Attorney LaMelo about this. Uh and I've also reviewed the actual uh order. So that is the, that is the limitation that is placed upon the planning board, the, the court has told the Orange Planning Board what to do, which is to approve the, the project.
Uh a question, Attorney Wenzel. This is Vice Chair Jones.
Oh, there you are, okay. I can, I see you Vice Chair, hello.
Hi, um so are we, we're just approving, are there any typically, we have some conditions of approval that they will work with, the board engineer and the board planner, you know, those, the types of conditions that we normally have at the end of a of an approval um as a condition of an approval, so do we not have those conditions this time, or no?
No, I, 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 I don't believe, and I don't wanna put words into Attorney LaMelo's mouth here. But I, 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 I think that Attorney LaMelo would agree with me that um the normal and usual and customary conditions that we place on any type of site plan applicant to work with the city officials uh going forward to ensure that they maintain the site that it's um, you know, handled uh appropriately under the, under the city code. Uh all of those pieces uh are acceptable uh in my view of this, so if, it, so as part of an approval, having those type of conditions are not in violation of Judge Gardner's order, that's my uh input. I think Attorney LaMelo would uh uh agree with me on that.
Yeah, uh I, I do agree, uh Mister Wenzel, and, and um I think the favorable thing for the board uh tonight to know is that um I believe all of the conditions in the engineer's report and then the planners' report um were addressed by the applicant in the, uh there was a revised site plan that was submitted uh before the hearing, more than ten days before the hearing, so that uh approved plan actually addressed um the majority of the comments that could be addressed on a site plan, uh to Mister Wenzel's point, uh other uh items that we typically see such as uh outside agency approvals, those type of things, obviously wouldn't have been on the site plan, but uh uh the applicant will comply with those.
Um Member Foster?
Thank you Chair, and eh Chair, I wanna know whether you got briefed on this matter and the judge, judge order? Uh because uh I don't, I don't remember, I've seen uh the order in the package I've received. And uh when with the board eh approve or disapprove a case and guy that goes to, to the court. I think that we have to, we, we would have either a Zoom meeting or e- extraordinary meetings to get briefed on, on the matter, that's uh eh this is why eh until now, I don't know anything about this order.
Bernie Wenzel?
Right, so this, this matter was, was appealed by um I believe from, um not perhaps, by Ms., by Attorney LaMelo, by, by by attorneys in her firm. Uh the matter was handled uh by uh uh I believe by outside counsel as well as through the city attorney's office, I believe Mister Mizrahi uh was involved in that. Uh so there was um it, it was certainly a contested matter uh before Judge Gardner. And uh the order from Judge Gardner um came down and it, it's very, it's quite, actually quite basic order um when, when it comes down to it. So the, the matter was appealed uh and as a result of the appeal, uh the judge ended up agreeing with, with the applicant. So there's, your once a matter is appealed, the, really the planning board doesn't have any further involvement. Because you sit in a quasi judicial capacity, so you, you're, you're not necessarily in, in involving yourself, other than say, we've made a decision. And to say though, that's the basis for decision.
Yeah, Council, what's the date of our order?
Um the order was
It was uh June, June thirty, I'm sorry, January thirtieth, uh twenty twenty-five.
So a- after we got that order, um you, you may be saying yourself, well, this is from January, why are we here in April? Well, because since that time, I've done uh I've had conversations with Mister Mizrahi as well as with uh Ms. LaMelo uh about the parameters of Judge Gardner's order, because we, I wanted to be sure that what we did was appropriate, that we weren't going to cause any further issues in terms of compliance with the judge's order. So once we cleared out what the parameters of Judge Gardner's order is, uh that's why you now have it in front of you in this, in this fashion.
Attorney LaMelo, I'm asking um for the benefit of the board, can you, if you know, can you refresh the board of the um conditions that were in place?
I, I can, um so the conditions that were in place um it actually were part of a resubmission um in the uh site plan, so those conditions of approval were at, although they were in the letters, the engineering review letter and in the uh planning review letter were actually implemented into the site plan itself, uh and that is the site plan that it was approved. Um generally, they involved um this project, the building, it's a uh will be a, a twelve unit uh building um on frontage of uh Scotland Road, but between Conover Terrace and Waverly Place. One of the conditions of the approval was that uh the applicant agreed to uh place a uh a right turn only sign on the exit out onto Waverly Place, and to also place some uh uh lights and audible signals so that a person walking down Waverly Place would be alerted uh to any uh, you know, somebody exiting the garage for, for pedestrian safety. Um there was also some requests to put fencing along the uh garage uh area to prevent people from uh being able to access the garage space uh through the Scotland Road uh frontage and through the, the rear of the lot, uh that's on the plan itself. Uh one of the other requests was to change the bedroom accounts, um and that was uh on the approved plan is, as well. Um for the most part, I, I will say, uh the applicant sat down um with the planner, with the board um in advance of and during the uh technical review committee process, and all of the requests were met. Uh so it was a very clean application with very few conditions uh by the time it was approved. Uh and those directional comments on the uh on the garage area on the exit ramp, uh had, or actually on the planet itself.
Thank you.
Outside agency approvals, um I think um I don't think Scotland is actually a category in that area, but i- if it is, then we would need county approval, um I think would be the only other condition.
Alright, thank you very much. Uh Attorney Wenzel, are we, is the motion to approve the order, or?
The motion is, the motion would be to approve the site plan application with the normal conditions, and I, and I actually, uh while Ms. LaMelo was talking, I refreshed my recollection by looking back. Uh always rely on Jerry Hazel. Um in his report uh from back in twenty twenty-three, he identified several of the items that as Ms. LaMelo was talking about them, I saw them in, in uh Mr. Hazel's report, about the warning signal, about the stop sign. Um there's also some reference in there about maybe sprucing up with some more uh landscaping um and uh and the fencing issue. So I, I, I think Ms. LaMelo once again would agree with me that those uh four issues uh would be part of the conditions. If not already resolved, that they would continue being conditions the applicant would strive to achieve in terms of finalizing the project.
Yes, I would agree.
Vice Chair, did you have any questions?
No.
Okay, then, um at this time I entertain a motion for case number twenty-three dash zero five, four ninety-two Conover Terrace LLC, four ninety-two Conover Terrace Preliminary and Final Site Plan Approval.
Motion to approve. I'm sorry. Is it me? Oh.
Not yet, not yet, Member Mobley.
Motion to a preliminary and final site plan for case number twenty-three dash oh five, four ninety-two Conover Terrace with no variances. As a condition of approval, applicant will comply with recommendations of the board experts as detailed in the planner's report dated May sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three, and the engineer's report dated May twelfth, two thousand twenty-three, along with the uh conditions described earlier in this meeting.
Mister Attorney, if there's no second, what happens to the motion?
There has to be a second, there is no motion without a second.
Second.
So we have a motion from Vice Chair Jones and a second from Council Vice President Ethan. Any questions on the motion? Member Mobley?
Uh I have a question. Um with respect to the vote tonight on the judge's order, does it matter? Uh if any, each member was not present?
Okay, I, I, I think I heard.
He said, does it matter if there was a member not present?
Right, so, so the, so because of the manner in which this came back, you're approving the site plan in accordance with the judge's order, so regardless if somebody was present or was not present, it is a vote on the uh uh on the basis of the judge's order for the application to be approved. So in regard, eh eh everybody's eligible to vote, short answer.
Great.
So we have a motion and a second. Any other questions on the motion? Madam Secretary?
Member Foster?
Yes.
Member Mobley?
No.
Council Vice President Ethan?
Yes.
Mayor Warren?
No.
Vice Chair Jones?
Yes.
Chairman Holmes?
No.
Okay, so we don't have enough affirmative votes. Uh so the motion doesn't pass. Now, let me just say this, I'm just saying. There's a judge's order that says that this application is to be in my work, uh uh not par- not stating the exact wording, but it's, it is this wording that the application is to be approved. So the, the non-approval means you are not in compliance with the judge's order. I'm just stating that.
Attorney Wenzel?
Yes.
Um first, can I change my, my vote?
Why not?
So as of the order of the uh, the, the judge, I vote yes.
Yeah, Attorney Wenzel?
Yes, Vice Pres- uh that's Vice President Ethan.
I, I think one of the things that I say, I know you are always trying to use the legal lingo.
The legal.
Oh, but let's put it in layman's terms. We didn't approve this application the first time. They took us to court and we lost. The judge is now saying to us, we had no reason to not approve that based on the land use laws. So we lost the case, and now the judge is saying to us, we need to approve this application. Am I correct? That's my understanding.
Uh, but put me far from it.
Vice, Vice President Ethan, I have to tell you, I should hire you for my office.
Uh but Joe, were we sued individually and forced to vote yes?
Well, uh uh Let me just answer Councilwoman Ethan's point, Councilwoman Ethan's statement is correct. Um Mayor Warren, what, I'm sorry, what were you saying?
Were we sued individually, and we ordered individually on how to vote?
No, there was no, no
We can still vote the way we wanna vote.
Oh, well, yeah, let me be clear, everybody, you, you can, you, you are all free to vote how you wish to vote. I'm just saying that the board was ordered to vote to approve the project.
But I think the chairman's feeling that he was forced to vote because there was an order against him, and it wasn't. And we should still be voting in accordance with what we think is the best interest of the city and the neighborhood.
I, I mean, I, and I will step in, um I, I disagree, the, the planning board does not act as individual members, it acts as a body. The court has told the planning board, your initial decision to deny the application was arbitrary and capricious, it was outside the municipal land use law. An order was issued that said that the application must be approved. It wasn't remanded for further uh consideration. Uh as the applicant, you know, uh we worked, I worked with Mister Wenzel on the uh resolution process, the adoption process, which is why it's April over here, and the court issued its order back in January. Um you know, we've already agreed to the conditions that were in the uh Mister uh uh Mister Hazel's report and the engineer report, so uh from the applicant's perspective, there's an order, the order is compelling that the board, the planning board, to act as a body. Um if the resolution passes, then the then the board is acted as a body, uh regardless of whether there are some no votes, um the resolution passes. If it doesn't pass, then we have to go back to the court um and seek to enforce the order uh again. Uh and that's what we intend to do.
So I'm, I'm glad you said.
So if we go back to court and we go back on, we vote the way we wanna vote, they'll have to go to court to do whatever they have to do, and the judge can answer to all of our people that we bring into the court.
I mean
Okay, so, so let me, let me, let me, let me, let me say this, um we're, we're I, I, I think you know, the, the, e- every board member has the right to express their uh vote and uh explain the basis for the vote. So um I think we have some more clarification that has come in with regard to the mayor's um um information, and also uh the very good statement from the Vice Chair Vice President Ethan, excuse me, um sorry, Vice Chair Jones. Uh so uh based on that, I'm going to uh use a little parliamentary sergeant in arms moment here. Uh so Ms. Reyes, I, I think based upon the recent uh colloquy that has occurred, and I don't wanna disappoint Vice President Ethan with using legal terms, so can we, wh- why don't we have that roll call vote one more time so that we're clear, because I think there was some change, so I wanna, everybody to understand what, based upon the information provided, what the what, based upon the information provided, what the parameters of the vote are, and they can proceed to vote.
I have a question.
Who was your question for, Member Mobley?
Um, uh, it, the question, uh, is when was the case originally heard?
It was originally heard in July of twenty twenty-three.
Right. So July of twenty twenty-three, and we're now in twenty twenty-five. Uh, Mr. Chairman, that was a long time ago. Um, I, I mean, uh, to, to be very truthful, I mean, I, it's so long ago. I mean, I'd have to go back and, and review everything again.
So what I would say is that the, the board, the court has not given the board the ability to go back and review. That would be a rematch. This was a court order where the, the, the judge said, because there's no variances, the law requires the board to essentially approve the application. Um, the board had, did not do that. Therefore, he has ordered the board to act in compliance with the municipal land use law and to, uh, approve the application. So there's no question of whether there's transcripts that need to be reviewed or, um, it's just not within the context of, of what the court, uh, decided. Ultimately, what the court said is, um, because the board acted outside of its authority previously, it's taking away the board's authority to do anything other than the ministerial duty of issuing the resolution, uh, of approval. Uh, I don't want to step on Mr. Wenzel's, um, toes in terms of, uh, advice to the, the board, uh, but, you know, my, I personally held the appeal, um, and was, um, you know, in the courtroom when the decision was read. So that is the, uh, context of, of the information I'm, I'm providing, certainly Mr. Wenzel's, uh, the board attorney.
So I, I think, I think we go back to, I, okay, I, I, I think, Mr. Chairman, I, I, it's a, I know it looks like we have, uh, I think Member Foston has a question. Um, so why don't we resolve that? But at some point, we should, with the, the, end goal after the call, after the questions, it should be a, a, a new roll call so that every, based upon the colloquy, everybody's clear as to what's going on.
All right, Member Foston?
Oh, I, I don't have a, a question, but, uh, I'm gonna use the same right you just did to change my vote.
Attorney Wenzel, let me know when I, uh.
Okay, so what?
We're gonna have a recall.
Okay, so, so there, so there was, there was a, there was a fir, there was a motion, a second. Let's, let's do the roll call again, and board members, based upon the information that was provided, you vote how you vote.
Member Foston?
I'll change it to abstain.
Member Mobley?
A pass. Come back to me, please.
Council Vice President Eason? Council Vice President Eason?
I'm sorry, I was on mute. Yes.
Mayor Warren?
No.
Vice Chair Jones?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, all right. Chairman Holmes?
No.
Member Mobley?
No.
Motion did not pass.
Uh, Mr. Chair, can I ask a question?
Yes, Councilwoman.
This is true, okay, and, and I, I understand, but, uh, Attorney Wenzel, so if we don't approve it, are we in contempt of court?
Uh, so what, you, there's a court order that says you are to approve it, and I think Attorney LaMelo indicated that, uh, it, should the board not, uh, do that, uh, then she would express her client's rights to go, in essence, back to Judge Garner and indicate that the board did not, uh, approve the application. And then the Judge Garner can i-initiate whatever, uh, action he wants to take. But yes, in essence, you are in, uh, you are in violation of the order. The order says approve, the order says approve, the order says approve the project.
So could we be fined for not, uh, abiding by the judge's order?
Council Vice President, can I ask for your cle, for clarity? And Attorney Wenzel, you can jump in. When you say, you, we, um, are we talking the board? Are we talking to individuals? How does this work?
Mr. Chairman, we act as a body, not as one.
Okay, all right, that's what I wanted clarity on.
If we get sued, we get sued as a body, not suing you personally or me personally. It's the body, it's the board, it's a body.
Thank you.
So would we get fined?
I, I, I'm, in, in this environment where we are an open meeting, I do not want to give the board advice about a potential litigation matter. Because it now, now we're traipsing into a different area beyond the court order. The court order said approve the project. The board has decided not to adhere to the court order. That is in, for lack of a better term, contempt of the court order.
So we're gonna spend more money on attorneys to fight something that the court has already deemed that we should approve because of the land use source and the reason we can deny our project. I guess that's the part I don't understand, but either way.
Council Vice President, I, I, I like the application. I like the project. I just don't like where it is. It's not, I don't think, as a resident of Mars, it suits that environment. So that why, that's why I voted no.
But I think, Mr. Chair, we all agree with that. But when we voted no the first time and we went to court and we lost, that means that the judge is doing the justice and he knows more than we do. I can say we can vote no all night, but if they take us to court five times and he says approve the project, what are you gonna do? Keep dragging it out?
Well, the judge doesn't know more than we do because we live in this community. We pay taxes in this community. We raise our families in this community, and we know what's best for our community. That's why planning boards are done by the town and from people who are in and working the town. The judge doesn't know more than we do. The judge made his ruling, but there was no order for any of us to vote any kind of way. The judge made his ruling. We get to vote our conscience, and that's what happens. And if there's another hearing, um, I would, I would have no problem going to the hearing. I'd have no problem, uh, having my neighbors attend the hearing as well to express themselves on the record before the court. So they have a full understanding of the implications of his order.
Uh, Mayor Warren, I understand everything you said, and I agree with you a hundred percent. But you all know you are attorney and you go to court, and there's a yes and a no to everything that happens, right? Guilty, not guilty. And usually when the judge's rules, we abide by the judge's ruling or we, they file an appeal and we go back to court. So either way, we're going back to court. That's all I'm saying.
That, that, that could be the case, but some judge in the past ruled that, uh, people like us couldn't live in these communities. They ruled that we couldn't get loans from banks. They loo, ruled that we couldn't sit in front of a bus.
I agree. I'm just saying, I just wanted to know the implications.
Hold on, Councilwoman Eason, hold on.
Yeah, I just wanted to know the implications of what the action is, the next steps after we've did not approve this project. That's all I'm saying.
But the next step will have to be taken by the, by the attorney for the applicant.
And, and if I may, just for the, the board's information as well. Uh, this was a project that is conforming, not just with your zoning laws, but with a redevelopment plan that was adopted by this board. So what this board said was, we want a project at this location based on redevelopment plan adoption that looks just like this project. In fact, this project is about a third of the size, um, that is actually permitted on that lot. Uh, and so, you know, certainly the, the, again, I don't want to, uh, infringe on Mr. Wenzel, uh, who was, is the board attorney, uh, but providing information to the board. Uh, you know, the, the, the judge has spoken based on the planning board and the city council's adoption of a redevelopment plan that said, this is the project that's supposed to go at this location. There's no variances here, and because of the variances here, um, the, the law does not permit the planning board to act as it did in denying the application. Uh, the court order says that. Um, it's directed the board to take an action, and now the board is going to tell the court, we don't care what you're told us. We don't care about the redevelopment plan that we've adopted. We're gonna act in the way we choose to act, uh, this evening, and we're not gonna adopt, uh, the resolution that the court has ordered us to adopt. Uh, and so, you know, the next step to your point, um, is, is for the applicant to go back to court and obviously seek, uh, you know, redress from the court, you know, to ensure that the order is enforced. There's no more hearings that are involved. The next step is to go back to the court and say, uh, the order needs enforcement, uh, an enforcement mechanism that's stronger than what was in the, in the, uh, initial order, but there will not be another review of the underlying case. Um, and the appeal period for the city to have appealed it to the appellate division, uh, has expired. So, uh, that was also an option that was not taken by the city.
Through, through you, Chair. So he, here's, here's where we're at. The, the, the motion, the motion was made. The motion has failed, and, uh, procedurally, uh, the, oh, the option for the board is, uh, at this point, if anyone were to make a motion to, uh, lift the matter from the, uh, the, the, the agenda, meaning to, uh, revote on the matter. If there were a motion to revote on the matter, you could do that. If there's not a motion to revote, I, 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 this matter is concluded, for lack of a better term, and obviously, as, uh, has been stated by the board members and stated by Attorney, uh, LaMelo, uh, the next steps are then in play. I mean, we can, it, it, it doesn't, we're, we're, there, there, there is no more that can be done because the motion's been taken. So the only question is, is, i- is anyone going to renew the motion, subject to a change in the vote? If there's not, if that's not gonna happen, then, you know, then, then, uh, the die is cast.
Is there anyone, any board member that is willing, that's desiring to renew the motion?
And it would have to be one of the no votes. It'd have to be one of the three, three no votes or the, or the person who abstained, who I think was Member Foston.
Yeah, so I'll say, speak now forever, hold your peace. Yeah, it sounds like the board has spoken.
Let's move on.
So with that, we'll move the agenda to case number twenty-four dash zero four. Sandra, Sandra, I'm sorry, Fissler, two seventy, Elmwood Drive subdivision.
Yes, good evening, Chairman.
The Chairman, um, Attorney Rush is here on behalf of the applicant.
Good evening, Attorney Rush.
Okay, uh, Chairman, I'd just like to ask if the board is ready to proceed on this application this evening. Last, uh, time we were here, um, we consented to an adjournment and carrying of the application based upon, um, there was a study that was to be prepared and presented to us at this time. Um, no study was presented at this time, and at the last meeting, it was agreed upon that whether or not the parties, um, whether or not a study had been presented or completed or not, the parties were prepared to proceed. So before I, uh, start my opening statement or get into my, get into presenting the application to the board, I just want to be sure that, um, we're proceeding this evening.
You probably be heard, Vice President.
Uh, Mayor Warren?
Yes, we did, I did receive, um, notes from the engineer who's conducting a study in the area. It is ongoing and preliminarily, um, able to report that there was, um, nothing that adversely affected, um, the property in question. Um, there, they would need further information as, as the point comes when there's gonna be construction. Um, but at this point, there's nothing that would disturb that particular property. And so I don't think there's any impediment to proceeding.
Very good. Then I'm prepared to proceed, Chairman.
Mr. Chair?
Uh, Council Vice President?
Uh, Mayor Warren, wasn't the question about the drainage of the stormwater?
Yes, there was a, um, projects in the area and trying to redirect the stormwater drain. But they did say that the property, um, was elevated enough that, um, based on where it is now, with nothing built there, of course, um, that their gravity flow would, uh, allow their, their drain to flow and there'd be no impediment or flooding like that. However, if there, once something is built, um, there's gonna be further studying that would come from the person who's building it.
So they resolved the issue. Okay.
Correct.
All right, um, Attorney Rush.
Okay, thank you again. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is William Rush, and I am the attorney for the applicant this evening, who is Sandra Fissler. This application applies to a property that's located at two seventy Elmwood Drive. It is block five seven zero one, lot five. And it is located in your R one zone. This property is an odd-shaped oversized lot. It is a corner lot with frontage on Elmwood Drive and Sylvan Way. The lot size is forty-nine thousand two hundred and seventy-four square, uh, square feet, and there's currently a single-family home occupying the property. So this applicant is requesting minor subdivision approval to subdivide the property into two conforming lots, which are proposed on the submitted plans and are deemed as lots five point oh one and five point oh two. Proposed lot five point oh one will be sized at twelve thousand five hundred and seventy square feet, and proposed lot five point oh two will be at thirty-six thousand seven hundred and five square feet. The existing family home will remain on proposed lot five point oh two, and five point oh one will remain vacant for the purposes of this application. Now, should the board approve this subdivision, the applicant's also gonna require one bulk variance for a rear yard setback of two point zero one feet for an existing accessory structure, which is, which is currently the detached brick garage, which is currently on the property. This variance is an existing condition and is not being created by the proposed subdivision. So it's a pretty straightforward, simple application. That's the overview of it. Um, I have two witnesses that I'm prepared to call tonight. The first is gonna call our surveyor, Lori Anderson. Ms. Anderson's gonna testify to the proposed subdivision and the survey plans showing the subdivision that were submitted. And then I will also call our architect, Fran Cunha. Although the application's not proposing any construction in lot five point oh one, Mr. Cunha was retained to show that a fully conforming home without needing any variances and that is in character with, and suitable with the neighborhood, can actually be constructed on lot five point oh one. So without any further ado, I would like to call my first witness, Lori Anderson.
Hey, Ms. Anderson, there you are. Okay. Ms. Anderson, can you please raise your right hand? You swear a firm, tell the truth for this planning board tonight?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Anderson, can you do us the favor, uh, and look at the zoom, they already gave you another hand? Um, if you can please, uh, state and spell your name for the record?
My name is Lori Anderson, L A U R I, last name A N D E R S O N.
Okay, and, uh, Attorney Rush, if we can have Ms. Anderson's qualifications on briefly?
Of course. Uh, Ms. Anderson, for the benefit of the board, could you provide your background and your educational background and your professional background briefly?
Yes. Uh, I graduated NJIT in two thousand and five. I'm licensed in the state of New Jersey since two thousand and thirteen. I have been working and surveying for the last twenty-four. I have been working in surveying for the last twenty-four years. Um, and I'm a member of NJSPLS, which is our state society.
And have you ever testified in front of any municipal boards before?
Yes.
Approximately how many?
Uh, five or six.
I'd like to ask that uh her qualifications be accepted as an expert surveyor?
This is a quick question. Um, where are those those five that you've um testified before?
Um, Clifton, Little Falls, um, not Carlson, Hasbrook Heights. I'm trying to think. I don't get called to many planning board meetings, so we're talking about over the last thirteen years. Um, Notley, well, Notley twice.
And your license and everything is in good standings at this time?
Correct, yes.
And just for my clarity, you are a ser- surveyor, engineer, uh any?
Professional land surveyor.
Professional land surveyor. Okay, so this board will accept you as a professional land surveyor, and your testimony will be limited to that as a surveyor.
Okay, thank you.
Now, Ms. Anderson, were you asked to prepare a survey for this property, two seventy Elmwood Drive?
Yes.
And did you do so?
Yes, we did the field work and preliminary work in case she wanted to go forward with a subdivision.
Okay, and do you know if that some uh that survey they prepared was presented to the board as part of the application?
It was.
Okay, and can you show that to the board this evening?
Yes. Um, it says the disabled participant screen sharing, so I cannot.
Go ahead. Try now.
Thank you. Bear with me, I just zoomed in on the variance chart.
Could you open it up so the board can see? All right, great. Okay, so what um councils, this was part of the package, but I I don't know if you'd like it marked or not, or?
No, as long as anything that's been provided to the board, you can just rely on what's been provided to the board. Ms. Reyes is agreeing with me, which may be the first time ever. And should you add anything new, then we'll start marking it A one, Ms. Rush.
Thank you very much. Okay. Now, Ms. Anderson, um, can you describe to the board exactly uh what is being presented here on this document?
Okay, on the left side is the existing lot five, which is forty-nine thousand two hundred and seventy-four point six square feet, around one point one acres. On the right is the proposed after subdivision, which shows lot five point oh one, and which would be twelve thousand five hundred and seventy point one square feet, around zero point two nine acres, and lot five point zero two, which would be thirty-six thousand seven hundred and five point seven square feet or zero point eight four acres. Lot five point oh two would be the lot with the existing house.
Okay, now, would you be able to, I guess, expand this so that the board could better see the uh depiction on the right-hand side after the, if the property was subdivided?
Yep.
And again, so if you could uh show the board where the subdivision line would run, if you can use your marker there and kind of run along, is that the thick uh blue slash purple line that you're?
Yeah, yes, it appears as purple because it has the two different lots, but I don't know if you guys can see the arrow that I'm pointing on. It starts on the corner on Elmwood Drive and goes back towards um a shared line that just has a jog to make sure that we meet all the requirements for the lot as far as depth and width on both of them.
And there's a square off at the at the rear line there, the rear proposed line?
It does.
Okay, um, and were you asked to provide an outline of what would be the building envelope? And when I say building envelope, I mean uh an envelope that would show basically designating where the setbacks would begin and end?
Correct. Both lots have on the current zoning requirements for front side and rear yard, um, primary building or principal building shown on the drawing.
And is that the uh dotted line with inside propos- within, that you see inside proposed lot five point oh one?
Correct. It's a dashed grid line, and each one is labeled with the appropriate uh setbacks, whether it's fifteen feet or whatever.
And did you uh determine what the square footage of the uh building envelope is for this?
I do not have that in front of me, but I can provide it if need be.
Okay, and do you, do you have, I'm just curious if you have the uh the frontage dimensions of the building envelope?
I do. Um, it is a little bit bigger than what the requirement is due to the curve. Uh, it starts straight, parallel to Elmwood Drive, and it's forty-eight point four six feet and starts to curve with the street for twenty-six point seven day.
And that's the frontage on the street, correct?
Correct. And that's that's back at thirty foot front, uh, the front setback line.
Okay, and so with the front setback line, what is the at the thirty-foot front setback line, what is the, I guess, the dimensions of the front setback line within the building envelope?
Uh, across the front, the total would be seventy-five point sixteen.
Okay, and then it obviously, it's a triangular shape, and it decreased the lot size decreases as we head to the rear of the property, correct?
Correct.
And what is the uh across the rear of the building envelope? What is the uh width there?
The width in the back on the new lot would be ten point five nine.
Okay, all right. All right, um, I have no further questions for Ms. Anderson. This is, obviously, she'd been called just to show what in fact, the subdivision would look like if the board were to approve the same. So I have no further questions for Ms. Anderson.
With that, I'll open up to any board member, excuse me, that may have any questions for Ms. Anderson. I have one, Ms. Anderson. I don't I don't know if you can answer it, but I might ask the question. Do you know why this is being uh requested? The subdivision is being requested?
No, you would have to ask the owner of the intent. I just make sure that they have all the documents necessary to move forward with the application.
Well, thank you very much for your testimony.
All right, thank you.
And next, we could call uh the architect Frank Cunha.
Good evening, everyone. Okay, Mr. Cunha, there you are. Okay. Do you swear a firm tell truth for this planning board tonight?
I do.
Okay, Mr. Cunha, can you do us the favor of please stating and spelling your name?
Sure, my name is Frank, last name C U N H A, Frank Cunha. I'm an architect. I went to NJIT, graduated in ninety-eight. I've acquired fourteen licenses. I'm actually working on Georgia right now. I do a lot of work uh different states. Um, I've testified in Rockaway, Woodbridge, Secaucus, Newark, Totowa, Ridgefield, in Miami, and Jersey City.
And um, Mr. Cunha, you're, uh, I know you're working on Georgia, uh, but how about?
I am licensed in New Jersey, yes, sir. That was my first one back in two thousand and three.
Okay, and no, no email since about your license. Your license remains in good standing, correct?
Yep, yep, absolutely.
Chairman?
All right, this board would accept uh Mr. Cunha as a expert in architect. And Mr. Cunha, your testimony will be limited to that as an architect.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, now, Mr. Cunha, um, you were retained for this project for what purpose? What were you asked to do?
Um, I was asked to basically take the uh site engineer's drawing and prepare a imaginary project for for a future owner that would be able to build a house that would uh fulfill the requirements for the site within the uh zoning ordinance for this location.
Now, again, so you, so your testimony tonight and and the exhibits that you're going to show the board are based upon asking for what could possibly be built?
Right, right. There's no client, so um when Mr. Rush reached out to me, I basi- he basically gave me carte blanche to design a home. I have a wife and three, three sons, so I kind of, I just designed a house that I would want to live in. Um, I grew up in Newark, which isn't too far away, so I kind of know the area, so I kind of just imagined, um, you know, living in this beautiful home. So that that was my approach, was basically to take this imaginary project and make it real and make it something that wouldn't even require a variance, really. It would be, it would be um if this if this subdivision goes through, you can build a house there without any uh zoning alterations, if, you know, there's a possibility for that, without any issues.
With that being said, why don't we go to your first um exhibit? This will be exhibit A one?
Yeah, I am unable to share right now.
Why don't we, we'll get it up uh first, Mr. Rush, and then we'll
Sure.
identify A one. Jump in the gun, Mr. Rush.
Yep.
Inert in the name.
Like always.
So this this could be A one. I mean, this is hypothetical, so this is, you know, uh, I don't know what the right terminology is, but it's not official because there's no client. Um, but what I did is the the what I'm about to show you uh is in full compliance based on building coverage, uh, the height, maximum stories, um, the building coverage is well under, previous cover, coverage as well as the FAR. So the house I'm about to show you would would be able to be built on the site without any variances.
Mr. Cunha, why, why don't we do this? Uh, I think Attorney Rush will hopefully agree with me. Why don't we mark uh this chart or table uh as uh A one architect's uh chart? Okay, and then um we'll move on to for when when you pull up the next piece, Mr. Cunha, it uh will then move to A two, okay?
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, Mr. Cunha, before you move on, just so the board's clear, um, when we're looking at this chart, obviously required is you you've obtained those numbers from the city of Orange code for R one, correct?
What I did is I took the site engineer's drawing.
Oh, can we go back to A one for now?
Yep, 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 yep.
Okay, so the required, when you see the the uh the dimensions under required, that comes directly from the the city's code, correct?
Yes, sir.
And the proposed is, those are the dimensions for the house that you were asked to design this, again, this house that could be built on the spot.
Correct.
Okay, so if there was an application in front of the board for construction for the house we're about to show them next, those would be the dimensions that this, the would, this proposed house would have and would be being requested, correct?
Correct.
And are there any variances being requested?
If, I mean, if they stick with a design very similar to mine, they wouldn't need a variance.
Okay, very good. Um, you were about to say how you came up with these numbers or what what you did next as far as with the?
Yep, yep. So what I did is I basically took the uh the drawing that you already have. Um, I'm not sure what the uh what this marking is, but it's the drawing one of three. Oh, I'm sorry, this is the wrong one. Um, just give me a second here. See if I can find this. So we basically took the chart from the site engineer's drawing. Uh, I don't see a drawing number here, but yeah, so this is where I took the chart from, Mr. Rush.
Okay.
I basically took the requirements and uh there's the existing lot, so then I used the uh what's what's on the site engineer's drawing. I used that for the uh for the proposed.
Proposed lot five point, uh, that's proposed lot five point oh one, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, um, can you bring up one of the, I know you have several different exhibits of the house and how it would sit within the uh building envelope? If you could start um with one of your exhibits, which actually shows how it sits in the building envelope.
Yep, yep, yep. So I'll start with this S K A one. Um, I don't know if you want to label this exhibit.
I believe we want to probably label that as A two?
A two?
Architectural, uh, A two is gonna be architectural rendering. Uh, how many pages it is?
It's gonna be three architectural renderings.
Okay. A two is architectural renderings, three pages.
Okay, three pages. So basically, what I did is I took the site engineer's drawing. I created this in a three-dimensional uh program, drafting program. And uh what I did is I came up with this footprint that actually fits within the boundary, so this dark line here is the proposed uh property line. And what we did is we took the actual setbacks that are required, and that's the second line um that follows within the um the uh the property line. So in the back, you need twenty-five feet, and then on the sides, you need ten, and then in the front, you need thirty. So we're well within that boundary. Um, it is a little bit of a challenging site in terms of the taper, but it does work. Uh, the backyard will, you know, be a little bit narrower. Uh, architecturally, we refer that, we we refer to this technically as a pizza pizza pie shape. Um, so there's a lot of sites that actually exist like this with cul-de-sacs. Um, and we were able to design a compliant uh project. So the one on the left here is the first floor. Um, I didn't get too far into the design, but you know, you'd be able to have a two-car garage, entrance foyer with a living room, um, as well as like an open-style uh kitchen, dining room, family room that would face the rear. And then upstairs, you know, I didn't, I didn't get into like closets and all that. Uh, but you're very easily able to put uh three or four bedrooms up there with one or two baths. So a typical home for this area. Um, this is just.
What was the approximate square foot for living space?
Uh, let me double check. Um, it's actually a little bit less than this. I used bigger numbers, but the uh first floor is about twenty-nine hundred square feet, including the garage. And I multiplied by two, but I think the second floor is a little bit less. So you'd be able to get an an envelope of about um total footprint of about five thou- five thousand eight hundred.
Okay, thank you. If you can continue.
Um, so on this drawing, we just attempted to show.
This is, this is page two of A two, correct?
Right, page two of of uh A two. Um, so here, we're just attempting to just depict like what the roof lines would look like, uh, conforming to the neighborhood aesthetic. Uh, we thought that was very important to do that. Uh, we actually.
Is that what you'd call a Tudor home?
Tudor home, yes, sir. And we, what we did here is we actually took Google Earth, and we actually inserted the house into the site to give you a visual of exactly what the house would look like from Google Earth. So this is the existing home, and with the subdivision, you'd be able to put it, put it, put a home in here that's within zoning that would fit the context and the fabric of the community.
Okay, so obviously, if this proposed home was constructed, that's that's the way it would look after construction, correct?
Uh, possibly, if they wanted to follow this plan.
If they followed, if they followed exactly what you.
Exactly, yes, sir.
Yes, okay. And and that, in the diagram C that you're showing on page two of A two, is in fact the the a depiction of the house within the building envelope, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, and uh what we did here, it just showed the height is possible within the thirty-five feet, and then we showed some basic setbacks here. And then on the final page is just some more renderings from the street and from the neighbors. So you can kind of see from the existing lot, if you're standing on the corner of the existing lot, you can see um how the building would blend in with the neighborhood. And then this would give you uh diagram E, uh, page three of uh exhibit A two, uh, gives you a sense of what it would look like from the street. And this is compliant with the uh with the current zoning for this neighborhood. And you could see the existing home right here in the back. So it's definitely possible to build a home on this lot.
Okay, okay, a home conforming without any variances.
Yes, sir.
And is also in the design proposed by the code, correct?
Yes, sir.
Did the code, does the code propose a Tudor home?
Yes.
It does?
Yeah, it asks for the uh for the, in this neighborhood, it asks for the uh for a certain aesthetic that's compliant with the neighborhood.
All right, and again, in your opinion, this, obviously, this home is compliant with this neighborhood.
I would love to build this home if I had a chance. So, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, well, if the board approves this application, you may get the opportunity, so.
I would, I would love that.
Well, I have no further questions for Mr. Cunha at this time.
Thank you.
All right, we'll open it up to any board members that may have any questions for Mr. Cunha. And I see your hand, Member Fauston.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I I have a a question eh for for Mr. Cunha.
Yes, sir.
Yes, I you say that it's it's, this is a imaginary plan. Is that a concrete, right?
Right, we're not, we're trying to get the subdivision, so uh Mr. Rush thought it'd be a good idea to present to the board that um, you know, this is, although there's not an actual client, we wanted to show it could actually be uh built properly without any variances.
If I could just, if I could just fill that.
That uh you uh uh um, this presentation, it it does not allow you to move any further with anything eh eh from tonight.
No, today, we're not looking for approval to build this home. We're just trying to prove to the board that this can be built up. Once, once the subdivision um is approved by the board, we would be able to use this. It would be a useful site, and it would blend with the community.
If if I could just further that answer, what we're trying to do here is typically, from my experience, when you ask a board for a subdivision, and you're not proposing any type of construction, the board obviously is always curious as to okay, before we grant you subdivision, what what's gonna go there or what could be there? So although we're not proposing any construction, So although we're not proposing any construction this evening, we wanted to give the board an example of what a conforming home could look like. On that site, so that's, that a builder could come in and actually submit plans to zoning and. Just be able to get permits without even having to come back to this board and build that type of home. So we want to at least give you a sample or taste of what could be there without just kind of asking you for subdivision. Without showing you what it looks like.
Thank you.
Any other questions from any board members?
I have a question.
Member Mobley?
Mm-hmm. I understand, I understand that you're not asking for um. Permission tonight to build uh the building, uh and that you're only asking for the subdivision. But, and it, and that there is no uh buyer uh to, to, to buy that parcel and build a building. But my question is, what happens if you, there is a buyer and he or she decides that uh. They don't like that house, or they, you know, want something bigger, and then they do need uh some relief.
Well, most likely they would be back in front of this board. And uh seeking approval for the variances, because anything bigger or larger, anything that goes outside of that building envelope that was. Seen on the survey and what Mr. Cunha built within is gonna require a variance, which is gonna give this board jurisdiction. Over whether or not that applicant would be granted that type of relief to build a bigger home.
So although we might vote uh tonight and to approve the subdivision, we have no guarantee that. The party that may want to come and build the building will not come and ask for some variances.
That's correct. Uh we, again, this was simply a conceptual to show. That a conforming house, and I think, you know, a rather attractive house. A Tudor house, which your code requires, could be built on that lot within the building envelope and not require any variances. What a potential, I can state for the record um that there's no potential purchaser, there's, the, the applicant hasn't even. Considered yet what she would do if this subdivision was approved. But if there was a potential purchaser, yes, this, there could be an application back in front of this board with someone looking to build something. That is not in line with what Mr. uh Cunha just showed the sport.
And, and if, if I can, uh Chair, just to further uh on Mr. Mobley's point. The, it, it would, uh while that, that is not before the board at this point. Let me just say this, that in these type of ser- these type of circumstances. It would be very difficult for that future applicant to make a claim of suffering from a hardship. For relief from a variance in the future, because this is a subdivision. Does, the lot is, the lot size is the lot size, it's been, it, if it were to be subdivided off. That future applicant clearly, as shown by Mr. Cunha's renderings. Uh building can be built there, a very subs- eh, eh, you know, eh, eh, not, uh you know, it's, it's, it's not a, a. Uh tiny home that somebody's being forced to build there, they, they certainly build a reasonable-sized home. Within the parameters, and if somebody was to seek a variance, which it would be their right to seek a variance. Either before this board or before the zoning board, but that applicant. Would have to present the fact that there was a history of a subdivision on this site, and then would have to deal with. The uh limitations to uh claim that they should get variance relief. Doesn't stop them from asking, and doesn't stop them from being granted it, I'm just saying this is not. Uh a lot that's created by the municipality, uh this is a lot that is being created through subdivision.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Cunha from any board member? Mr. Cunha, I'll ask, what is the benefit of uh us having a subdivision at this time?
I defer to Mr. I, 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 you know, I was hired to do a design, I would defer to Mr. Rush and his client.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, I mean, obviously the, to answer that question is that the benefit of it is that this is an oversized lot. And we're actually developing a buildable, conforming lot that can, and, and we've shown that a home, rather attractive home can be built. On this conforming lot without the need for any variances. So the benefit is that you're able to actually more efficiently utilize property. And still stay within the confines of the city's code.
Alright, thank you. Mr. Cunha, thank you for your testimony.
Thank you, good evening.
I have no further witnesses, Chairman.
Alright, with that, I'm gonna go to the board professionals, and I'm going to ask Mr. Hazel. If you will, please.
Hey, uh Jerry, there you go, swear a friend, tell the truth for the zoning board tonight.
I do.
Okay.
Just to uh reiterate a bit of what this application's about, that the applicant is seeking a, a. A subdivision, approval of a subdivision in uh. In an area of the city where the, the ordinance does uh. I don't wanna say does not permit it, but it, but it, it's not encouraged, let's put it that way.
Disfavored.
It's not favored, there you go. Uh one of the things uh that we look at is that the, you know, and, and, and part of the. Part of the intent behind this is that uh not just within this, in, within this uh orange, but elsewhere. There has been, there've been times where people have chosen to subdivide lots and make them smaller. And make the existing lot smaller, and then uh subdivide off a, a, a chunk of it to try and develop another home and so on. And it, it has the impact of substantially changing the character of, of a neighborhood. You have a, a building that has a, a nice generous, relatively generous lot. And all of a sudden, it, it becomes literally half the size, and that was part of the intent of trying not to have that. Um this area of the city is very distinctive, larger lots and, and things of that sort. One of the things that uh went into coming up with the standards for this area is looking at. Uh a, a minimum lot size of ten thousand square feet, which is relatively large. And uh in this case, this property, they are proposing a subdivision that uh allows. Them to have both lots be larger than the minimum required for subdivision. And one of my biggest concerns with it was the uh irregular, irregular shape of the uh, the parcel itself that's produced. And that's one of the reasons why I asked that uh, uh some sort of a conceptual. Uh rendering or schematic of a, 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 a house that could possibly go there be provided so that it can. Give the board and, and give us all a sense of what can go there. Um. Again, this is something that's not encouraged. I think that however, this lot is uh arguably one of the. Larger lots in the area, uh in the R one zone in that area, which is why they're able to uh produce to. Relatively, to conforming lots in terms of size anyway. Um I'm not. Eh very excited about the, the, the irregular shape of the lot, because I think as was mentioned a little while ago. I think by Mr. Mobley is that um while the, the conceptual house that we just saw can fit there. In the, in the parcel, um you know, someone uh can very easily come and ask for something. That's more significant, and, and basically uh trigger a whole lot of different variances, setback and things of that sort. But I guess um, you know, essentially what he has shown, the architect has shown is that it, that, that the site can accommodate a, a. A house that is of the character and so of the, the surrounding. Houses in the surrounding area, and um, you know, uh based on that. It, it, again, I, I'm not particularly happy about the irregularity of the shape of the lot, but um. You know, I think they've demonstrated that this lot can accommodate a. Similar-style house than, that is proposed, that is existing in the surrounding area, and um. You know, so I, I don't see the negative impact uh based on what was presented. Uh of the subdivision. Again, the, the irregular shape of the lot is, is concerning. But it does uh provide the, the necessary setbacks and the ability to accommodate. A house that is uh in keeping with the development pattern in the area. That's it for me, Mr. Chair.
Alright, are there any questions for Mr. Hazel from any board member? Alright, again, I'll ask. Is there any benefit to the applicant subdividing other than to. Build upon that subdivision?
And I mean, I can't speculate for the applicant, but in terms of just looking at it from a planning's perspective, uh in my opinion, there, there is none.
And.
Because Chairman, I can call the applicant and she can provide her reasons. If you'd like to hear the words from her own mouth saying why she's interested in subdividing this.
That would be great. I just wanna ask Mr. Hazel one, another, one other question. And you made me forget it.
Apologies.
Um, alright, and if we can, can uh Attorney Wenzel, is that out of order? Or is it okay for us to hear from the applicant at this time?
No, in essence, uh she's being uh like a recall witness based upon. Uh the in- information provided by uh Mr. Hazel. Uh I just don't know, I mean, I, I'm not sure that Mr. Calhoun Lane has anything. Do you wanna just finish out with, with Mr. Calhoun Lane, and then we can go back to Ms. uh Fissler?
I was trying to delay it since I can get my memory back, and I did, so thank you, sir.
No problem, no problem.
Mr. Hazel, the um, if this subdivision was approved, the applicant would still own both properties, is that correct?
Well, I mean, i- i- it would, they can, just as someone can own two lots on a street or possibly even next door to each other. They would still own it, but they would be two separate distinctive uh tax lots.
Okay, I see Member Fauston has a question.
Thank you, Chair. I, I, I have a question for Mr. Hazel. Eh should they respect uh the. Similarity of the neighborhood or, or should they, since they eh okay with the requirement of the zoning of the. City hall, eh 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 do, can, can they, can I, can I, they do something on their ease?
Um, when you say, if they do, if they can do something different in terms like a different-looking house or?
Exactly.
Yeah, well, I mean, a- a- again, what was presented was conceptual, so uh someone could potentially. If this is subdu- it's, if it's approved for subdivision, someone could potentially buy this lot and put it, and, and. Propose to put anything up there that looks entirely different, and so one would hope especially because that. Uh person would have to come before this board, one would hope that they would be sensitive to the uh development style in the area and things of that sort. And I think that as this board has in the past, hold the uh, the, the applicant at that time to. Design cues and so that uh within the area, so that they're not building something, because that, even though it's. Their lot and their property and their house, it does have a visual impact, which is something, which is a real thing. It's not just a, an opinion. It's a, it's a real thing, and the wrong. In it, house that does not fit in aesthetically with the surrounding is uh considered a negative impact that can. Uh be grounds for uh requiring that the applicant not build as they're proposing.
And I see Council Vice President Easton.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Chairman, I have the same question. If there's no plans for the lots, why the subdivision?
Well, I, I think you were gonna, we're gonna hear from the uh applicant as to what they're thinking is. I, I, I can't speculate, uh when I've seen stuff like this, and again, this is just my opinion. When this type of subdivision has been done, it's been essentially uh basically to uh monetize the. The, the, the subdivided lot, basically, uh whether you sell it, you build something and rent it, but that's been my experience. I'm not saying that this is necessarily what the applicant's motivation is, but that has been my experience.
So Mr. Hazel, during this whole process, before it got here, nobody bothered to ask that question?
I- i- if I can, that's not really a consideration.
Yeah.
For the board in terms of approval of a subdivision. The standard for approval of the subdivision is whether or not the subdivided lot meets the requirements of the zone. If the subdivided lot meets the requirements of the zone, the statute says. The board must approve the subdivision. Now, I think it's very appropriate, and I think Attorney Rush would agree with me, and that's why I think he's putting Ms. Fissler on. That there's an inquiry by the board as to what's going to happen. Because the board has a role to play, I believe, in terms of, you know, knowing what's going on in the community. But from a legal standpoint, you know, what that person intends to do with that lot is not a standard. For the board, technically from either from a planning and engineering or legal standard to present to the applicant.
So Mr. Wenzel, if we approve this, anything that happens on those lots. After the approval has to come before the planning board, right?
If the, if. So, so if the approval is provided for the subdivided lot. And the uh future applicant, whether it's Ms. Fissler or Mr. X, whoever it is. If they are going to want to build something. Where they are going to seek a variance for whatever reason, a bulk variance, a height variance. A variance because of the way a driveway is being built or whatever. That applicant would have to come back to the board to get approval for that project. And let's remember this, regardless, whatever the, whatever is going to be built there. At some point in the future, they would still have to meet all of our zoning requirements. They would have to meet all of our building requirements, they would have to meet all of the stormwater requirements. I think that that was something brought up earlier that the city's keep an eye on in terms of stormwater management. So that, that requirement goes on regardless if it's one whole lot or two lots.
Attorney.
Okay, great, uh, um, Member Mobley.
Was uh, was the uh Council Vice President finished?
Yes.
Okay, uh my question is, let's fast forward five years from now. And many of us have moved on, and there's a whole new board, and let's say that uh someone does come. Um and they want to uh build something there, uh what kind of protection can we uh include? So that the new board will be informed that there had been a subdivision. And that um we were essentially um presented with. Uh, you know, with the uh rendering and suggested that that would be the, or that could be uh. And there would be some hope that that would be the building and the size and so forth, and that it would fit in the footprint. Uh of the uh site, and that was part of, may have been part of why it was approved, if in fact it is approved tonight.
So I, and I not overly familiar with the application form. That we utilize in Orange, but I know in general, one of the, one of the requirements. Any application is made uh is uh an identification. Of all prior applications and resolutions, Ms. Reyes is nodding her head, so I feel confident about this. So there would, there is that new app, future applicant in five years hence, you'll still be here, Chris. Uh ma- 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 maybe not Hazel, but uh, you know, uh but. At that future point, that applicant would have to append to their application. Arguably this potential resolution which says, okay, uh approve the subdivision. And by the way, you showed a plan that shows that the house can fit in that uh site. Mr. Cunha's very beautiful pictures, uh and that can fit in that site. Uh so they have to have that in their future application, so that the future board would know. in their future application, so that the future board would know as part of the packet, and whoever the future planner is, whoever the future here is, they would be able to then comment and say, well, wait, there was, A, there was a subdivision, and B, there was proof provided at the time that a house could be built within those parameters. So both of those things have, the, both those things have, have been, in essence, the record has been made.
Okay, good, that's good. Okay, I'm good with that, thank you.
If, uh, if Mr. Chair, if I may, one other aspect of this that I just want to bring to the board's attention, that they do understand that, because of how this ordinance is fashioned, it's, it, it's sort of a two-part situation, it's not just the standards, that the standards basically that are required are based on the type of house that are being built, and the, 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 the house type is in this ordinance essentially like a use, so that in, in the R1 zone, you are permitted to build what we uh, call a suburban one-family detached, and, uh, that is essentially based on the lot size. So that if they did not, these dimensions are very generous, and if you look at in, in the ordinance, there's also something called an urban one-family, uh, detached, which is a one-family, they're both one-families, but one is significantly larger. The smaller one, the urban one-family, is not a building, a permitted building type in the R1 zone. So they couldn't go and say, okay, well, we need some more yard, or we want to make this fit a little differently, so we're gonna build a smaller house, that would not be permitted. So, this is one of the values of having a building typology, because it does take into account not just the zone, but the type of buildings that are permitted in the zone, and what they look like, and what the dimensions that are, are pru-, that are permitted, which you saw on the little red line outlining the setbacks, and so is based on the, on the suburban single family, which is, uh, a, a larger building with much more, uh, generous, uh, dimensions required.
Chair?
Member Mobley?
To, uh, through you to Mr. Hazel. Mr. Hazel, when you looked at this, uh, did you determine whether or not the lot is large enough for a garage?
Okay, when you say garage, you mean it depends on the type of garage, you're talking about a detached garage which the existing lot has, which existing property without this subdivision currently has, or are you talking about just a garage? Because clearly, one of the things that would be, um, affected by the irregularity of the shape is being able to accommodate the house and a driveway that gets to the back of it. So, you know, I mean, the, the, the setback, you're not required, you're not you, you are able to, to put a driveway in the setback, but whether you're gonna be able to do that in a house, I, I don't see being able to do that. So it would have to have a garage similar to what, uh, Sekunya, uh, proposed, which is something in the building.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, I have a question, either Mr. Hazel or Attorney Wenzel. And I know this is just for a subdivision, I know that's all we're here for, but all these, um, proposals are being thrown out there, so, uh, Attorney Wenzel, you talked about, um, any um, development that comes, would have to come before this board. If, uh, development comes, an, an application comes before this board, where there is no need for any, there's no request for any variances or deviations, and this board does not approve it because it doesn't fit the, the, the area. Um, are we, again, at stake of being sued and having to spend money on attorneys in court and so forth?
Well, I, 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 well, I, I, we're going into
Yep.
Little, 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 little too far of a hypothetical, but let me just say this. The, the, as Ms. Raisel has outlined, there are several standards that are applicable to this district. And that if, uh, a party was going to, uh, build something or seek to build something that is outside those standards, they would have to come to the board and get board approval. If they do not get board approval, then they do not get board approval, okay? So if, if they're gonna be seeking variances or deviations, and we've had this with various, uh, applications over the years, right, where somebody says, oh, I need to build a foot, a foot out, or I needed an extra percentage, or I need to be a little higher, and they have to provide those proofs. That would come before you, and then you'll render a decision. And, uh, you, you know, if, if there is sufficient proof or there's insufficient proof, it's gonna be shown at that time. Uh, the point being is that, uh, I, once again, going back to, you know, what Mr. Rush has thrown, has shown through Mr. Cunha, is that there's clearly a potential to click all the boxes. Now, I know that this was not a complete application, and there's various other considerations, so we're not holding Mr. Cunha, or Mr. Rush, or Ms. Fissler to that, but just saying that it's possible. And that's the point of this, is that there's that possibility. But even if there were a deviation or vari- or variance request, it'd have to come before you, and you would have to decide if you can grant it.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions for Mr. Hazel? All right, thank you for your testimony. Move to the board engineer.
All right, let me get Mr. Calhoun Lane. Okay, John, do you swear for and tell truth for this planning board?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Excuse me. You know, you think you leave something behind in childhood, and it just jumps out and gets you every once in a while. Uh, good, good evening, everyone. Uh, what, one of the great benefits I get to have going after such professionals is, uh, Mr. Hazel and, uh, Mr. Wenzel's, I get to keep things very brief. Um, as they've already covered, not, not only everything, everything that's in my report, everything I would have would have brought up in testimony, um, so all I really have to say is just from looking at the subdivision from an engineering perspective, it meets all of the requirements that it needs to meet. And that's, that's really all I have, unless anybody has any questions for me.
Thank you, sir, and any questions for Mr. Calhoun Lane, from any board member? All right, seeing none. Thank you for your testimony, sir.
Thank you.
Chair, uh, I know Mr. Rush indicated that he may want to call Ms. uh, Fissler. Uh, so I just don't, I just wanted to round back to that before we take our next step here.
Absolutely. How could we, we could not forget Ms. Fissler.
Hi, everyone.
Attorney Rush?
Okay, yes, at this time, I'd like to call Ms. Fissler.
All right, Ms. Fissler, uh, do you swear, you ready to write? Do you swear for and tell truth for this planning board tonight?
Yes, I do.
Okay, Ms. Fissler, even though your name's on the Zoom, can you please state and spell your name for the record?
Sandra Fissler, S-A-N-D-R-A-F-I-S-L-E-R.
Okay, Ms. Fissler is the owner of the property, is that correct, Attorney Rush?
That's correct.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, Ms. Fissler, uh, when did you purchase this property?
December twenty twenty.
Okay, and although I'm going to ask you, I guess, rather personal question, um, without getting into too much detail, can you provide to the board the, your personal situation at that time when you purchased the property?
I purchased the property with my ex-fiance. We're no longer together, which makes it a much more difficult prospect to keep up with this house.
That's what I was gonna ask you, now, based on the fact that you purchased property with your ex-fiance, and I'm assuming with the intentions of starting a family there as well on a large piece of property, that's no longer, that's no longer the situation, is it?
That's correct, so that situation actually, um, changed in twenty twenty, September twenty twenty-one. And ever since then, it's just been me maintaining it by myself. Other than the issues that I'm sure everyone has walked through their house, it's a beautiful house. I actually absolutely love my neighbors, I know almost everyone on the street, speak to them regularly, I think they would say nice things about me and the neighbor I've been. I pay a lot of money to maintain the actual property, meaning I am paying landscapers, I'm paying them to cut down trees constantly, I am
Is it more property than you need for your own personal use at this time?
Not only is it more property than I need, I think if you were to look around at the neighboring houses, I think it's the biggest lot at this point in the area. Um, and it's a lot more than I think is, is really that I can maintain.
Okay, uh, Chairman, I have no further questions for Ms. Fissler.
Oh, okay, um, any questions from any board member from Ms. Fissler? All right, I'll ask the question, Ms. Fissler, why are you, uh, subdividing? Yeah, I mean, you still have to take care of the property, still have to pay the landscapers. Um, I-
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, Chairman, I did forget one question for if, if the board grants you subdivision, do you intend on offering this lot for sale?
I believe so, I think that's the right thing to do.
I might have answered, she may have answered your question there, Chairman, but.
So is that what you're looking to do, Ms. Fissler, you're looking to?
I think eventually, yes, because, um, like I had mentioned before, it's just quite an oversized lot. That part of the property rarely gets used by anyone in my family, when they do visit, I'm here by myself. And frankly, I would like to maintain a smaller lot.
Okay. And you've been in Orange since twenty twenty, you said, and your situation changed in twenty twenty-one, so it's twenty twenty-five, why now?
Well, this has been in process for quite some time, so maybe a year to a year and a half that I've wanted to do this, and have been pursuing it and, um, getting all of my ducks in a row. Um, I think now it's because I'm starting to spend a lot of time looking at the difficulties with maintaining this house, the architecture, trying to preserve all the natural moldings, as you can see in the background, and it comes with a huge cost, um, so if I could spend a little bit less in terms of the maintenance of the outside, I can dedicate that to being, you know, restoring this house in the way that it should be with that money.
And I, I do agree with you, it is one of the largest lots in the city of Orange, um. Not that it has anything to do with anything, but are you planning on leaving Orange?
Absolutely not, I actually, my intention, if I could subdivide the, the lot and eventually sell that piece, it would only mean that I would stay here much, much longer, um, I, you know, I think that this is a great neighborhood, I work in New York City, it's so commutable. I'm originally from Rhode Island, and this has a very similar feel to the neighborhood. I walk my dogs in the park, um, several times a week, I, I love my neighbors, um, so there's really no need for me to leave. Yeah, that's, that's kind of it.
Okay. I, I appreciate your, your candor. Um, is there any other member that may have a question for Ms. Fissler? She may be the only one to be able to answer the questions that you may have. All right, well, thank you very much for your, your time and your testimony.
Thank you.
We will get to a public portion, um, in a moment, um, Attorney Rush?
I have no further witnesses this evening, Your Honor, uh, Chairman. I was in court earlier today, so.
Yeah, we've been in court all day. Um, just for sake of the, um, respect, would you like an opportunity to close after the public portion?
Uh, yes, I'd prefer that, thank you.
And, um, Madam Secretary, I may ask you to keep me on point for that, or, or Attorney Wenzel, he's good with that. So with that, uh, I'll entertain a motion to open the public portion of this application. And again, this application is strictly about subdivision. So. We have a motion from Member Fauston? Is there a second? Second from Vice Chair Jones, are there any questions on the motion? All in favor of opening the public portion, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Is there any member that is opposed to opening the public portion of this application? Seeing none, the public portion is now open, so if there's anyone from the public that would like to speak to this application, I'll ask that you, uh, turn on your camera, state your name and your address, and you have two minutes to address any concerns. And Madam Secretary, I may ask that you help me identify any hands?
I don't see any hands raised that this-
I see one Zoom user.
Oh, no?
Zoom user?
Actually, yeah, uh, Aisha Samuel.
Okay, Aisha Samuel. Please unmute yourself, state your name, your address.
Aisha Samuel four oh one Highland Terrace. Um, the only thing that I have to say is that I totally understand what she's going through with these old houses, the maintenance costs are really exorbitant, and that is a really large lot, so I totally understand why she wants to um, sell off a portion of it and use those funds to maintain her house, so she should be allowed to do so. That's all.
Thank you for your comment.
Um, is there anyone else? I see Zoom user.
There we go.
Zoom user, please state your name and your address.
Hi, my name is Dara Pasante, I'm two two six Elwin Drive.
I'm sorry, was it Erica?
No, Dara, D-A-R-A.
Dara, and the last name?
Pasante, P-S-A-N-T-E.
A-N-T-E, and your address again.
Two two six Elwin Drive. Two two six Elwin Drive.
Elwin Drive, okay, thank you.
Um, I've been a resident here since nineteen ninety-two, and when my husband and I bought this home, we came here because of the land, and because of the greenery, and because of the trees, and with the Metcalfs, and, uh, um, other bill this, here built is for families. Um, I understand that we have hardships, but my, my thing is I don't understand how is this going to help you, instead of you moving, because you've been here since twenty twenty, and you and I spoke, um, Sandra. And you was complaining about the taxes, and you said, you know, you were gonna move. And now you subdividing and, um, building a home that it does not, to me, fit in this area because of how old these homes are. And my thing is, you're trying, you're saying that you're gonna sell the home, but eventually the money's gonna run out because the taxes don't go down, they still go up. So I'm, I'm trying to understand why are you building a home now? Um, and if you were having financial problems before, why didn't you just move? And also, um, for the board, um, Chairman, I want to know that you guys go around and come over here and look at this area, how beautiful it is, and while we have the open land, and the land was for our children, when the Metcalfs built this was to enjoy the land and cookouts and family gatherings, not for people to come here and buy it and say, oh, wow, I can subdivide, and I can put another building, and I can make some money, it's not fair to the people who spend here. You have people on this block that have since the eighties, and none of us building, we all have land to build. And no one wants to change that area, the look of the area, because it's beautiful, I just wish you guys would come over here and look when they start talking about Seven Oaks, because we are a historic district. I don't understand why you don't come over here and look and see where the houses is and what they're trying to build. And then, like you said, she's trying to do a driveway and a garage, and I just don't under-, I just don't understand where all, all this is gonna fit.
Thank you, Ms. Pasante.
Oh, I have one other question, and I-
Have to make it quick, you're over time.
Quick, how do you bypass the two hundred feet notifying people, because there's residents that don't even know about this meeting tonight? Uh, and about her, um, subdividing, and I don't think it's fair to the other residents that no one was notified, so I know when you do do a subdivision, you're supposed to notify people that's two hundred feet from you certified, and I don't understand how they skipping that to get approval, and you don't have the other residents that's two hundred feet from her.
Right, thank you. Uh, I see, uh, Alicia Rodriguez's hand?
Yes, hi, um, Alicia Rodriguez, forty-seven Mountain View. Um, I'm not familiar with that location, but I've been listening, and I guess my question is, I see both points. But my question to you guys is, is there a way to make it so that there's a stipulation, if they were to pass it, um, that they would have to, or they cannot build anything bigger than a one or two family? Like, there are way to make sure there's restrictions, it is because you guys seem to pass a lot of things, um, to protect some, at least some of the land, and just like, is that, is that possible?
Uh, thank you, Ms. Rodriguez, and as you heard from our planner, actually, uh, um, Mr. Hazel, if you can refresh your your testimony.
Yes, that's exactly why the zoning is what it is. Basically, it's an R one zone, and it's very, it's the most restrictive area in the city. And it's limited only to a one-family house. You cannot build a two-family house or anything else here. It's it's very restrictive. And one thing, since I have the floor, but I wanted to mention is that in terms of when this ordinance was being put in place or being developed, one of the things that, you know, deciding on the standards was was that we did was that we looked at the properties in and around the R one zone, basically Seven Oaks. And the ten thousand number that came up with in terms of lot size was the predominant size. There were very, very few lots that were larger than that. More of them were smaller than that. So we wanted to put into place standards that would preclude this from just happening over and over and over. And I think it has been mentioned already that, and and you can see that this is perhaps one of the larger lots in the area. So this is not something that's going to be copycatted, that someone down the street is gonna do. It's very difficult for most of the lots in this area to be subdivided and still meet the required standards.
And the last question about it was, her question is, how do we bypass the simple protocol? You guys didn't answer that question, and I really would like that response. Why did we bypass? And it's not just because this application has been done before, and I would appreciate a response to that.
And the applicant's attorney will have an opportunity to address that.
I'm happy to address that now. Obviously, we we request it and we're provided with the statutory two hundred foot list, which was provided by the city's tax assessor, along with any other interested entities, all of which I've presented a certified affidavit to the city stating that a certified mailing was sent out to each and every address on that list, as well as the interested entities, and that the notice of this application was published pursuant to the statute. And all of that's been provided to the board secretary, and I'm assuming that it was checked and verified by the board secretary or someone designated with that job, or we would not be able to go forward tonight, and the board would not have jurisdiction to hear this application.
Mr. Rodriguez, you can put your hand down now. Thank you for your 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 questions and comments. And to address Ms. Pasante's concern as a board member, I have been in that area. I I've visited that area. I have in-laws in that area, and some of our board members are in that area. So we all are very familiar with that site and the area of Seven Oaks, and we understand the historic value of Seven Oaks. So just to address that concern that you had. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this application?
Motion to close, citizens coming.
A motion to close public portion of this application. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Member Foster. Are there any questions on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor of closing the public portion, please raise your hand or say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone that opposes closing the public portion of this application? Seeing none, public portion is now closed. Attorney Rush?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Again, since it's getting late, I will be brief. And since it's a pretty simple application, I think it requires a pretty simple summation. Simply put, as as already provided tonight by the evidence presented into the record by the applicant, the proposed subdivision will conform with the minimum lot size and dimension requirements for a conforming lot in your R one zone. So essentially, both of these proposed lots are conforming lots in your R one zone, and if they were existing today, they would be conforming as they as they sit. The only variance that's being requested is I believe it's a side setback for the accessory detached garage, and it's an amount of two point one foot variance. It's a pre-existing condition, and it exists whether or not this exists as it sits there today. So it exists whether or not this property, whether the board agrees to subdivide this property or not. So clearly, it's not causing any substantial detriment to the neighborhood, and it, again, it's rather immaterial to the application. So I think with Mr. Cunha's conceptual presentations, I think it's been established as well that a fairly conforming-sized home that suits the neighborhood quite well and fits into the property quite well and actually has a nice aesthetic point of view can be built on this property and stay within, without requesting any variances and stay within the conforming building envelope. So we've, the board of this applicant has reached its threshold with respect to determining whether or not this will have, whether they have the right or not to have this proper subdivision approved. Again, it's not doing effect any permitted uses in the neighborhood. It has no, it's not gonna cause any such substantial detriments to the neighborhood. It's not gonna cause any detriments to the public good and will not impair in any way the intent or purpose of the master plan. So for those reasons, I'm going to ask that the board look favorably upon this application and grant the relief being requested by the applicant tonight.
All right, thank you, sir. With that, we'll entertain a motion for this application.
Motion to approve subdivision of two seventy Elm Drive for case number twenty-four dash oh four, Sandra Fissler, two seventy Elm Drive, with a variance for rear yard setback on lot five point oh two of two point oh one feet, where ten feet is required. As a condition of approval, applicant will comply with the recommendations of the board expressed as detailed in the planner's report dated March fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five, and the engineer's report dated February eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five.
We have a motion from Vice Chair Jones. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Member Mobley. Are there any questions on the motion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary?
Member Foster?
Yes.
Member Mobley?
Yes.
Council Vice President Ethan? Council Vice President?
Yes, yes.
Mayor Warren?
Yes.
Vice Chair Jones?
Yes.
Chairman Holmes?
Yes.
Motion passes. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Everyone have a great night. Thank you.
You too. Thanks. Be safe. With that, we're gonna move the agenda. Is there any unfinished business?
Chair, just quickly, if I can?
Yes, Attorney Winslow?
Last meeting, we brought up the question about a joint meeting with the zoning board. And so I've been in communication with Ms. Reyes and Ms. Scipio about setting something up. I think we are projecting out at this point the potential of using May nineteenth, which was our special meeting date that we would normally have used if we were backed up. We don't have anything on that date, according to Ms. Reyes. That's been communicated to Ms. Scipio at the zoning board side. And I think that at this point, she, the zoning board side, is doing their due diligence to find out if that date matches up. Just remember, when you have this type of meeting between the planning and zoning board, that there has to be a notice from both the planning board and the zoning board that this meeting is occurring, although no action is being taken. So it's not something that can just be put together kind of at the last minute. So the the upshot of this is, we're looking for the May nineteenth date to to hold this. Hopefully, it matches up with the planning, with the zoning board's availability.
And Madam Secretary, just for clarity, the May hour, May nineteenth special meeting date has already been approved and noticed, right?
Yes, I would just need to do a second notice.
Okay.
That has been noticed already.
All right. Is there any other unfinished business? Is there any new business?
Mr. Chairman?
Council Vice President?
Real quickly, I just want to put on in the board's ear, as we move forward with development, that the trash receptacles that we're having these departments put in are not large enough to hold the garbage that there. So on weekends, and we're trying to get rid of our rats and our mice, though they're overflowing. So can we, as a board, look at as we move these developments that they have to get larger containers to store the garbage and make sure that we put something in there that says they have to have them emptied at least on the weekends before Monday morning? Because our city is just overflowing with garbage, so I'm just putting that out as we continue with development. And that at some point, I'll talk to Mr. Maze that we need to address that in our garbage. That their dumpsters are too small. So I don't know if Mr. Hazel or somebody can look at the size of dumpsters that they're using, and we can suggest they increase the size so that they will hold more. Because when you don't, you pick them up on Thursday and Monday morning comes, with all the animals we got floating around Orange, it's a disaster. So food for thought, and I'd like someone to look into that. So maybe we can have some discussion at our next planning board meeting.
All right. Is there any other new business? Um, Mr. Hazel? I know we looked at that master plan some time ago. Is it due for review?
It was done, adopted in twenty eighteen, so it's a ten-year period. So twenty, which is fast approaching than you think.
Right around the corner. Yes, okay. And then Attorney Winslow, help me with this, please. As far as voting, when a a board member is present for an entire application and then they abstain, that's happened several times throughout these meetings, is and then all of my schooling on parliamentarianship, if you will, tells me that there is no such thing as abstention. But can you help me with that? A member that has been present for an entire application, other than a conflict with the application, the abstention process, can you clarify that for me, please?
Okay, so so if a member has a conflict, obviously, they shouldn't be participating in the application period, okay?
Correct.
But but a board member abstaining in effect serves as a no vote, okay? Because there needs to be a critical mass of affirmative votes. So when someone abstains, what they're effectively doing is voting no, even though they haven't voted no. Okay, by virtue of the fact that they haven't voted yes, probably is a better way to look at it. Anything other than voting yes is a no. So if, now, this doesn't apply to the planning board. If you were the zoning board, where you have to hit a certain number for use variances, you need five. So if somebody abstains, you haven't met the five vote number, okay? Because that person serves as a no. Or when matters before the planning board, we have six members tonight. If some, if you, in order for something to pass, you need four affirmative votes. If there are two abstentions, those two abstentions are in essence no votes, the other remaining four members would have to vote in the affirmative for the matter to pass. So it it it's not like it is in, not like anybody should be like they are down in Congress, where an abstention effectively serves to reduce a quorum. What you're really doing is you're you're reducing the number of affirmative votes. So your 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 point is taken, Chair, that in abstention, you can abstain, but the effect of it is is a no vote.
Okay. Member Foster, thank you, Attorney Winslow.
Hey, Chair, can we have a close meeting to to see regarding the the trend of the of the project we we approve over the years? Because I remember we approve many projects and and with till now, we don't know what's going, we don't know their their future. And then we don't know what's going on, whether they whether they're gonna be built, whether they they're rejected by the council. We don't know anything, but we we are, we are voting mostly on Main Street. We're voting projects on Cleveland. We're voting projects from any many corners of the on the town, but it seems that we need a close meeting to know exactly what's going on about those projects.
Well, Chair, let me just I believe Ms. Reyes provides an annual rundown. You know, with these projects, just so everybody understands, and I think you got maybe a little flavor of this, with these projects, normally, while they may get approval before you in year one, they're probably not breaking ground until at least year two or three because they have to get financing, they're getting additional partners, they gotta get vendors, they gotta get approvals from the state, from the county. So realistically, you know, when you approve a project, you're probably, and and I think it's very good that Ms. Reyes gives you an annual update and says, hey, look, you you approved this project, and this is where they stand. But realistically, you know, these projects are, you know, literally years in the making for 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 some of them. Others are not as intense. But but I know that we do that here, and I know my other boards do give an annual summation of 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 the status of those items, which I think is very helpful. So I think doing that annual update, you know, is important to the board so that you know what's going on and you know what the, you know, whether or not these projects are actually going forward.
Absolutely, and and yes, and and thank you, Madam Secretary, for those updates. I've just been adding on to it, so. Yeah, so we we do get that, and we don't need a close meeting for that.
Mr. Chair, can we just ask, Mr. Foster, has he not seen that report or is he not getting it? Because sometimes we know email don't always work perfectly. So is it a possibility that he's not getting it, Mr. Foster?
I had a problem with my drop box, and this is why I miss some of of the documents that have been sent to me. But and I fix it, but but I might miss, I might miss some of the documents. Ms. Reyes, can you send that that report back to me, please?
Yes, I can.
As a chair, I also want to alert the board that I am working to collaborate with the planning department to conduct another development summit, which essentially outlines and has all of the developers come in and present on their projects, give them the status, where they are, what roadblocks they have, and just give input from the community.
Yes, and 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 Mayor Warren, I have to, I thank you because the last one was very helpful to me. And I know Councilwoman Neeson enjoyed it, so thank you for that, that refresher, if you will. Is there any other new business?
Councilwoman Neeson is gonna be providing refreshments during those.
Of course, whatever your little heart desires.
Don't drink the milk.
So I think that's an excellent idea.
Yeah, I think that's great. And I hope everyone got their FDA. Yeah, yeah, I think that's great. And I hope everyone got their FDA, is it FDA? The financial disclosures stuff taken care of?
I'm doing mine tonight.
Oh. That's the councilperson of you, not the planning board member. With that, um, if there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
To adjourn?
We have a motion from Vice Chair Jones. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Councilwoman Neeson. Are there any questions on the motion? All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone that opposes adjourned this meeting at ten oh two P M? Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all. Have a good night.